Take your seats, please. Thank you. There are copies of the agenda here for anyone in the audience who would like to point. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. For those in the audience, thank you for coming. At this time, I'd like to call the joint meeting together between the planning board and the Board of Selectmen. And in accordance with the protocol of the Board of Selectmen, I've asked the Board of Selectmen Chairman to lead us in the pledge of leases.
Thank you very much.
Pledge of leases to the firing United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, our God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
I've been asked by the producer of tonight's television program that we are being televised that if the speakers would kindly be close to a microphone when they speak. And those from the audience, if you would kindly use the podium and use the microphone there. It would be greatly appreciated. I'm sure the folks in TV land would like to hear what you have to say. The agenda tonight consists of four items, four discussions. The first item on the agenda is a discussion of Springbars Road project. The history of that will be presented by Mr. Clark, who is the Chairman of the Community Preservation Committee. The visioning area, transfer development rights, and infrastructure. The visioning area will be discussed by Heather Harper. And the transfer of development rights will be covered by Brian Currie, the Town Planner. So also, that portion of that discussion is a possible vote to authorize engagement of a facilitator of the planning services. So at this time, I would invite Peter Clark to the podium and make our presentation, which was requested by the Selectmen, to cover the history of the Community Preservation Committee project at Springbars Road.
Thank you very much, Ralph. I am very pleased to be here with the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board. Ralph Herbst is the Planning Board Representative on the CPC and has been a great help in that way. So I'd like to start with a few minutes to just give an overview of the whole project as it's been ongoing. There's a PowerPoint that has broken a chronology into nine phases. And four of them still have to be done. So there are five that have been completed and four that still stand in front of us, that is to say, the Board of Selectmen and the CPC and the town as a whole.
Keep going. Excuse me, Peter, but we do need to kill a few more lights. Do you have enough light?
Yeah.
Where you are. Okay. So that should be, that's much better. Thank you.
Thanks very much. You know, I believe, that there are a number of people who've been working very hard on this project. Barbara Schneider, who is no longer on the CPC, is a person who really initiated a lot of the work on this, and she deserves to be recognized. Deb Converse, our planner, is here. Patty Haney, the Vice Chair of the CPC and the Chairman of the Community Housing Subcommittee, that has done a lot of work on the housing project. So I want to acknowledge them. Laura Schufelt is here from Mass Housing Partnership, and they have worked with us extensively in the last months. So this is our fourth report to the Board of Selectmen. I think it's our second to a joint session. Probably in the past, this has been going on for five years, you have not felt that it was really on the doorstep of getting started. But this time around, this review, I hope, will give you the context because the project is really very close to being ready to launch. And so we're into the phase of a final review with the Board of Selectmen, who have to get their arms around this project, and really getting the issuing of an RFP at some point in the near future and moving on to select a developer. So let's step back and take a look at this briefly. On your chronology, which is a four-page document that you have in front of you, what I call Phase One, which is exploring the concept of multi-phase or multi-use project, is really the first item there. But it actually went on for about six months. In terms of identifying a land bank balance that had been passed along to us, that was to be held to ensure that we could pay off that long-term debt. And we took a look and looked at the projections, and we decided there was about $3 million that could be available for a major project. And that's what really started the discussion in the winter of 2008 about a multi-use project. We had a workshop with Susan Moses, many of you attended, and that really started discussion about the use of a major land purchase for multiple purposes. So that's the exploring phase of it. The second phase was selecting the parcel. And this took about 12 months. It started in the fall of 2008, and that's about, on your big chronology, runs kind of the middle of the first page. And that happened when a working group was put together. I think, Mr. Murphy, you were instrumental in suggesting that move forward. We had 300 committee housing corporations, Selectmen, CPC members, and they set out to generate ideas and to look for potential parcels. A year later, in the fall of 2009, the Pacchico property at Springbars Road was identified, and shortly thereafter, the working group voted it as their recommendation, and CPC accepted it. So that was kind of the selection of the parcel. That was Phase Two of this process. Phase Three of the process was really purchasing Springbars Road and developing broad ideas for the use of the land. That was an 11-month process. And on your full chronology, it runs from the last four items, February of 2010, on your first page of your chronology. Don't bother trying to read all of that. And it runs to the middle of Page Two. But the main events were that we developed a memorandum of understanding with the Board of Selectmen that set out some principles for the housing development, and it set out the division of the land into conservation and community housing purposes. And the April Town Meeting voted to purchase the 21.13 acres. About $1 million for the open space and $2 million for the piece of property that was for community housing. The final closing on that was actually in January of 2011, and that's kind of the end of the purchase part. But during that, we were also developing general uses, overall planning discussions. The conservation restriction was written on the open space parcel. Some work was done by study groups of the CPC on housing and sewer-ing and other kinds of things. So that is the third phase, or the purchasing of the property and the developing of some initial big ideas about it. We then go to the fourth phase, which was developing the draft RFP. This actually took, has taken about 15 months. And it involved a lot of study by the CPC and use of some consultants, and a considerable amount of time arguing about how the language of that draft should work. That's not the focus of tonight, but it certainly was a major piece of our work. On your long chronology, that runs from the middle of Page Two, February of 2011, and on through virtually all of Page Three down to January through May of 2012. But I want to point out a couple of major events in that. Decisions were made that this should be rental rather than ownership, some rough, actually, one limit on the building configuration, that there should not be one large building, the notion that there could be two or more buildings for the units. We had set, you may remember, back with the MOU before April Town Meeting in 2010, that there would be roughly 20 to 30 units and no more than 70 bedrooms. That was the general scope or size of the project. So that had already been set. We did a land survey. We did further work on the sewer-ing potential. We looked, we met with the engineering department to look at road issues. And eventually, in the fall of 2011, we engaged Mass Housing Partnership to help us really hammer out the final details. And that essentially took seven or eight months of work. During that time, we reported back to the Board of Selectmen, and we had a public meeting in December of 2011 at Lawrence School that David Viera moderated for us. So that process of 15 months was really moving from the general design ideas to a finished 16-page draft of an RFP. The next stage is really, has been, the last five or six months, considering steps in the implementation process beyond the work, the initial work that was done by CPC, who takes hold of it, how many people are participating, how is it going to move forward. And tonight's meeting is really perhaps the end of that phase of consideration and really stepping forward to take next steps with that. We're looking forward to that process. It involved partly the Town Meeting action in the spring to reject the sewer article or the allocation. We went and sat down with the Wastewater Quality Management Committee and talked with them about their ideas. At the same time, Horstley Witten was contracted to develop a master plan for the conservation area. So here we are then, where we are now, and there are about four, I suppose you could divide these up in different ways, but four phases left. Reviewing of the final project and the issuing of an RFP. And that's the process in which groups larger than the CPC certainly have to be engaged and feel an understanding and an ownership, and we hope to move that forward. We're ready to support that in any way we can and work with those who are involved. After that will come actually selecting a developer and negotiating the property disposition. That may take three to four months. Again, these are estimates. If this moves forward, that might be in the range of April, May, June of next year. Setting up project financing by the developer is a lengthy process because tax credits appear to be a very necessary part of the financing of this, and there is a waiting list for those tax credits. That may take 24 months. It could take longer than that. So that's about a two-year process, perhaps, maybe a little more, to get the financing finally set up, at which point the final stage would be the constructing of the project and the leasing up of the units that are built. And that, again, an estimate, 12 to 18 months. It could be as early, I suppose, as fall of 2015, September, October, November of 2015, or it may be pushed back a longer timeframe to January of 2016 or that range. And again, these are very much estimates on the length of time. So that's a quick overview of five phases that I think we've been through in moving this project forward. We have a Town Meeting vote that was based on a memorandum of understanding. We have a draft RFP that has been hammered out, but still has made certainly illicit questions or need further review. But I hope we have a package that is ready to be looked at and reviewed and moved forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter. Before you step down, yeah, I just wanted to...
And I don't know whether Laura, did you want to say anything about that?
Does anybody have any questions of Peter Clark?
Mr. Clark, is the plan for the town to retain the ownership of the property?
Doug, that's one of the questions that still needs to be resolved. It is a decision by the Board of Selectmen, not by the CPC. When we looked at the issues of long-term lease versus sale, our recommendation was for a long-term lease. For some small elements of control that you might retain on the project if you had it leased rather than having sold it. And I think in either case, and again, the Board of Selectmen has to discuss this, the purpose isn't to make a lot of money out of leasing it or selling it. The purpose is to move it into the hands, the control of the developer, so that they can build a project that's useful and important, and we hope a real model for the town. But both how it's done and for what value is not something that, we made a recommendation about leasing, but we haven't talked about the costs.
Other questions for Mr. Clark? From the Planning Board?
I have two. One, is there, I didn't hear any talk about public access to get to Little Pond. Is that still on the plan?
Yes, it is. And you all have a map in front of you that has a building.
Yeah, we've got to turn the lights back on.
That shows the division of the land, but it isn't absolutely clear. Let me point out the division more clearly to you, or perhaps Laura, Deb, you can, where are you, Deb? Oh, you're back there. I'm sorry. If you can point that out, the segments. On your map, there's a building shown which has been removed, but that building is on the open space, the conservation land. Next to that building, you'll see a narrow neck that runs east and west roughly, or southwest. And then a block of land that goes up to Springbars Road. And that block of land and the narrow neck and the property where the buildings are and that broad sweep of land that goes down by Little Pond and includes the wetlands is the conservation land. And so the public access to that property would be at Springbars Road where that parcel meets Springbars Road. It's the block of land that's furthest to the right and upper right of your map. Do you see that, Jim?
Yeah, I was wondering about access to Little Pond, not just the, is that still being preserved?
Oh, yes. And the access would be, we need to decide whether, in fact, some of this, which is housing land, is not used and made, but this is the access, this way. Little Pond is over here, so there will be clear access.
So you could put a canoe and get it?
The current development of a plan for that land includes with it the possibility of a kayak-launching area. It includes a place to sit, paths. So there's a plan being developed right now by Horstley Witten. There'll be a public hearing, another, a second public hearing on that plan coming up, I believe in November, late November. But there is a hope to be good public access to Little Pond and to the property, and to be able to look at the wetlands and the cedar swamp area.
Wasn't it previously on the southern border, wasn't it talked about going in that way? I went to a tour of the site four or five years ago and walked it, three or four years ago. Wasn't it going to go in that way? Has that changed?
I can't...
They talked about coming around the outside and in there? Or was I mistaken? That was never part of the plan?
Patty, do you know, I know it's being considered in the development.
These are being treated as two separate parcels of land, not as one. There's the conservation piece and the housing piece. The conservation piece will have its own entry. It doesn't cross through the housing piece.
There will be an effort to make sure that there is appropriate treatment of the border between the two, so that there are paths and there's controlled access. But the goal is to have full-town access to the conservation piece and to Little Pond.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
One other question. When I toured the site a few years ago, there was a lot of talk about a coastal bank being on the property, and the plan in front of me doesn't show it, but I'm wondering, is that what I see represented there with the proper setbacks from the coastal bank, and that green area is what's being developed in the setbacks?
That's correct.
Okay. Didn't see it here, but I can see it there. Thank you very much.
Other questions for Peter Clark? There are none. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you very much.
Next, Heather Harper is going to speak to us about visioning of the area.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity. Brian Currie is bringing up a slide of the site, which we may want to refer to a little bit. And I really want to talk at kind of a 10,000-foot level a little bit, hopefully generate what the purpose of the discussion is for this evening among the two boards.
Okay, we need to turn the lights down again. Above, is there any chance you could...
There's not much buttons to push.
The one's marked in red.
The ones marked in red, I believe, are... No, do you have enough light?
If you just hit the ones marked in red, it should work.
I want the same halo that...
That good enough?
Perfectly clear. No, that's good enough.
I wanted to make a couple of general comments. It's been a pleasure and really enjoyable over the last several weeks and months, working with Peter Clark and with our Community Preservation Planner, Deb Converse, really becoming familiar with the Springbars Road housing development project and familiar with what the work, 15 to 18 months of work that the CPC Subcommittee has put into developing a development plan for Springbars Road. The method that's been used, I'm not very familiar with, but in the last few weeks have come up tremendously, and they clearly have a very valuable consultant at a great price as well with Mass Housing Partnership and Laura Schufelt, who's got a tremendous amount of experience developing affordable housing, and at a scale that our community hasn't done before. This particular project is a community development project that is much larger than anything that we've taken on. We've done many smaller housing development projects, one here, two here, but something of this scale and this much of a transformation for a neighborhood is a very significant project. Our community spent over $3 million acquiring the parcel, been tremendous planning effort and the effort to create the community open spaces in place, and now what's left is really the planning effort related to the development project. A great deal of work has already gone into the visioning and the specifics for the housing development. The pieces that I hope we can spend just a little bit of time on are the adjacencies and how this project might relate to what's happening in that neighborhood now and what might happen in the future. We know there are tremendous assets related to a light industrial parcel, and Mr. Currie can talk a little bit about that when he comes and speaks with us. But we purchased a property that has the development rights associated with a light industrial use. We're proposing to use a much lower intensity use for that property, and I think the taxpayers have purchased the full value of the property, and we need to evaluate how we harness that value and either reinvest that value back into the property in some way, or take that asset value and utilize it somewhere else in the community so that the taxpayers get the benefit, the full benefit of what they're purchasing. And so some of that land use planning exercise might really be a benefit for us. It may result in opportunities for additional affordable housing or asset value that might be able to be reinvested in the property. So that type of visioning, I'm hoping we spend a little bit of time talking about. Some of the other areas where we need to spend a little bit more time before we're ready to proceed with an RFP to build 30 or so units of affordable housing is to take a look at some of the regional infrastructure. When I say regional, I mean the neighborhood infrastructure, particularly the transportation, road network, sidewalks, pedestrian access in the region. If we're inviting 30 families to live in that area, what are those residential-type, residential-scale assets that are there? Are they there now? Should they be? Who should be paying for those? And how can those be phased into the town's meager capital investment strategy? The other types of things we might want to take a look at is making connections to other types of residential assets in the area. The impacts of the expansion of the sewer, we do know that that needs to happen to accommodate this project. What are the ancillary impacts of that? Would it require a tie-in to some of the larger commercial developments in the area? And what might the growth impacts there be resulting from an extension of a sewer line? The neighbors to this property are also light industrial and have those asset values associated with them, so we need to plan for what the growth of those uses might be in that area. And those are really the big-picture items that I hope we spend a little bit of time talking about and maybe bringing in some expert technical assistance to help us with that vision so that we make the best decisions that we can for the redevelopment of this property. My personal goal is to make sure that the community, at the end of developing the property, gets out of it what it anticipates and that we have a very solid asset that's there in 30 years when the useful life of the property is at, it's time for reinvestment, that there's something that we all want to reinvest in, and that the community that has chosen to reside there has a high quality of life in a neighborhood that makes sense for our community.
Thank you. When you say you wanted to speak about these issues, are you talking about now?
Sure.
Okay. Well, then, would you mind staying up at the podium for a moment or two?
Do you want to comment?
Do you want to talk about transfer development rights now?
I just want to talk to the aerial here, Ralph, with your permission.
Sure, absolutely.
I know I have a mic.
Maybe we can get to it.
I guess I do. So if you don't mind my back to, so here an aerial photo of the vicinity and our grounds. This is the intersection with Springbars Road and Worcester Court. It's centered on the aerial photo. And this is the locus... And this is the locus for the housing development that's going to happen near sometime in the near future, as Dr. Clark has described, just described for you. And just give you a little rundown of the locus area. This is this area here. This is the O'Hara Motors, W C I B, the bank. This is Forky Chevrolet, S U B F W Web. This is the mall parking lot here. This is Rose Street, and this is Data Straits. And this is the plaza. That's Cappy's. We've been to where Cappy's is. So that's the vicinity that's describing the locus. And some of the issues I know that's going to be confronting us as a planning board in our community, are you paying attention, Richard? Certainly the things that Heather has hit on here, and one of the big issues that we're going to be confronting is the redevelopment of this area. Right now, in the immediate environs, this, these buildings, we see lots of parking lots. Typically associated with auto dealers. They were developed back there in the '60s and early '70s. We've already seen some redevelopment. F W Web, planning board members, is this site here. We just voted to approve that as a site plan review. And it will soon be under construction. And some of the issues that we're going to be, need to be confronting as a planning exercise in the fairly near future is that we are introducing now a fairly substantial residential land use in this vicinity. So one of the things that we need to envision is, is this area here in the immediate environs that type of zoning or that type of land use that we want to see in the area? Or do we want a transition zone from a relatively high-density development, relatively speaking, to a transition zone for mixed-use development, such as we see on East Main Street, that leads then to the regional destination-type uses that we find in the plaza and in the mall? All those things need to be addressed because the redevelopment will be happening here before we know. We have seen redevelopment already here with Mr. Black's project, it's an office and apartment mix. We've seen a lot of pressure to redevelop this Rose Street, and the office buildings are running here. This is all, by the way, this entire area is on Business Two, which is our highest intensity zoning district that had in town. It's our Burger King, McDonald's drive-through type zone. We're going to see, this is the site, we'll probably be seeing, this is a CBS right here. And there will be some plans coming in in the very near future, probably within a month or so. Those buildings will be coming down, and you will be seeing a redevelopment take place in that area. You'll be confronting it, planning board, as a regulatory view in the next month or so. So we have a lot of redevelopment issues. Do we have the proper regulatory scheme in place to address it? What are the types of resources that we're going to need as a community for, that we're going to be envisioning this entire, really this entire block, together with New Trade Center, the Old Trade Center, together with the residential development that's going to be occurring? Heather also hit on some of the interconnections that we need to be discussing. What are the connections now from, we're going to use this as our example. We've talked about in the past, how do we get to Papa Gino's? I can always pop in the car and go down Springbarrs Road and get the Papa Gino's. Wouldn't that be a shame? There's a sidewalk on the south side, there's a sidewalk here on the north side, and some of the issues with regards to infrastructure that we were talking about is how do we get there safely? Not just for this development, but for the redevelopment that we envision here and the redevelopments that we're envisioning here. What will probably happen is I'll take the path of least resistance to walk down the sidewalk here, between Cappy's and Christmas tree shops, but that's not something we want to encourage. There's a paper subdivision down here. It's been there since the early '80s. It's owned by the same people on this parcel here, and these same people on the Starbucks parcel on the plaza. What are some of the connections that we might be able to talk about and envision? We're going to have a connection to Alma Road. Alma Road, the Heights Road, and you're there at the harbor. Those are the types of visioning efforts I think the planning board and the selectmen in the community need to discuss outside this project's boundaries because CPC has typically handled that. So you're responsible, the planning board, to be thinking about what's going to happen here five, 10, 15 years down the road. We also have an opportunity, in fact, we have 10 or 12 acres of industrial zone land, to be talking about transferring some of those rights out of this vicinity to somewhere else in the community that might be more suitable for that development. Now, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts foolishly has, that's a case study for transfer of development rights and cluster subdivisions. That's one of the smart growth efforts. It's actually the Rolling Hills subdivision. Some years ago, planning board actually transferred nine lots on the water resource protection districts over into the Rolling Hills subdivision. The same concept is here. If we have a 30-unit development, we still have the underlying residual development rights that are an asset to the community. And what do you want to do with that asset? You can package it into the financing for the project, or you could use it as an other financing mechanism for another project somewhere else. It's a type of question, I think, that the planning board and board of selection need to at least be discussing as it's an asset for the community that needs to be further expanded. Some of the things we need to do, short-term, near-term, but longer-term, in terms of land use planning in this vicinity. We have also seen redevelopment questions and appraisals coming in for the plaza. It's eventually going to be coming your way. It's reaching some of the buildings' useful life, together with the mall. So that's the shortness. And the need of it, the question is, how do we get it done? And some of the questions that I've asked today for the boards to consider, we're going to need a little additional resources to accomplish. Our list is long. We've got lots of on our plate, planning board and board of selectmen. So some of the things we need to be discussing is thinking about what other assets might be out there for us to investigate in terms of expertise, knowing our pledges are a little tight. We'll look out. Lots of overview of, I think, some of the land use planning that needs to happen in this vicinity because that project is going to be going relatively quickly.
Okay, thank you, Brian. I guess questions then from anyone on the board for either Brian or Heather at this point? Mr. Currie, can you relate, how did the previously developed part of that lot relates to the new development? Is the new development on the already disturbed area?
Right. Mr. Pacheco has, I'm sorry, the previous property owner has extracted the mineral resources and exploited the resources, and this is where, my understanding, roughly, the development will be occurring.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Kevin? This isn't so much a question, it's more of some comments. I've had an opportunity to sound, it's now with town manager, assistant town manager, Peter Clark. We had a wonderful presentation from the partnership to the board of selectmen as well as town staff. This is a long process, and this is a process that I think folks have to thank the CPC for getting us to this point. And I think that they've worked diligently to identify a parcel, take the parcel to the next step, and develop the original RFP. But I also believe that we surely want to keep the CPC involved in this project. We want to keep the CPC moving forward in this project. However, I think that because of this project is such a large housing development, we need entire community buy-in for this project. I guess if we were to look at, we're going from apples to oranges. This town has never developed a housing project of this magnitude. I think we're to the point, and my responsibility is a fiduciary responsibility, is to make sure that we're going to be successful as a community. I want to make sure that everybody knows in this community that we want this to be adjuled. And to be able to be adjuled, we want to make sure that we all have buy-in, meaning that we want, that's one of the reasons I asked that this be on the planning board, board of selectmen agenda, a joint agenda, because it's not just a board of selectmen issue, it's an issue that the planning board is necessary because those are things, issues that we don't typically deal with day in and day out. The planning of an area, the transfer of development rights. And there are some processes that need to move forward. One is, besides, we would have to go back to town meeting to dispose of the property, whether it be a lease or whether, in fact, it would be a sale to whomever it might be. And then the ultimate decision would come back to the board of selectmen after that. However, I think it's important that we start to involve in the professional staff to the level where we can hold people accountable. Not us as volunteers, but work jointly with the partnership and the professional staff and the board of selectmen and the planning board to develop a vision and develop a project we all can be proud of. There's still some questions out there that need to be answered as we move forward. And what Brian led on to is we're looking to bring in some other professionals, and hopefully we have a presentation and a proposal on that this evening. But things like wastewater treatment on that facility. We still haven't made the decision whether it would be an onsite facility, whether it would be town sewer, whether, what the ramifications are. Do we have to include other adjacent properties? Would it be a gravity feed? Would it be a pump station? Those are still some issues that need to be decided before we move on to a developer phase because the developer himself is going to have to bear these costs. Those are some issues that everyone needs to have the cards all on the table in regard to the light industrial use and the transfer of this property. We continue to take light industrial land out of the inventory in this community. If we remember right, the Augusta property was taken out. There was a commitment from folks back at that time, the planning board, many of you were probably still on the planning board at that time, that we would reinstitute that, reinstitute that light industrial land. Over in North Falmouth was one step, but this is another parcel that we continue to lose in light industrial. So that's an issue that needs to be addressed out there. We want complete community buy-in, not only from the neighborhood that, where this is going to be, but from the greater town itself. We want to make sure that when this project is set and done, there's not going to be additional costs moving forward, that we can then look to the next project and we can say we had a success story moving forward. And that's why I think, I know that some folks on the Community Preservation Committee believe that we're just stepping in and being naysayers at this point in time. I can say that is the furthest from the truth, at least from my part, because the part that I want to do is measure twice and cut once. Because when this project goes forward, I want to make sure it's a successful project so that we can pull off from that one to the next project as we go down the line. So I'd like to ask Mr. Susso to make some comments on how we'd like to get from kind of the things I've outlined to the next step as well. Is that all right? Sure. Absolutely. Okay.
Thank you, Julian Susso, Town Manager. Thank you, Chairman Herbston. Chairman Murphy, it's a pleasure to be here as well this evening. And I do want to, as Kevin Murphy indicated, sort of take a next step here is, on your joint agenda, of course, one of the items is a concept of a facilitator of planning services. And I want to thank Town Planner Brian Currie for suggesting to Heather Harper and I a conceptual possibility that we've had some very preliminary discussion on, and we bring to both boards here this evening for your potential consideration. Again, in a project of this import, as has been clearly described, we're breaking a lot of new ground here in terms of size, complexity, importance to the community, and this is all about ensuring ownership and project success going forward, and we want to treat it with that level of seriousness. In that spirit, the suggestion was made that we consider reaching out to our colleagues at the Cape Cod Commission and talking about the possibility of them working with us in a project of this importance and bringing to bear their considerable planning expertise, visioning services, and related matters as, you know, experts in this field. And I personally am delighted that Executive Director of Cape Cod Commission Paul Nizwicki and Deputy Director Christie Santori are here with us this evening. We do not have a formal presentation to give. They agreed to join us as observers this evening on fairly short notice. We thank you for that, Paul and Christie. Actually, Paul and Christie and I saw one another earlier today and as well as yesterday, and I know Selectwoman Flynn was part of that as well, in the very important Cape Cod Clean Water and Wastewater Consortium, the conference that Cape Cod Commissioners pulled together over the last couple of days, and actually was wrapping up just this evening. So many critically important things, and obviously, this project has a very important wastewater component, as Selectman Murphy has reminded us. That's of paramount importance to us in terms of the way it is dealt with in the long run to ensure that we do not have any unanticipated costs going forward. But again, that's an indication of the potential spillover effects that really a mandate that we give this, a very serious overview, consideration, and take really the next step from the good stewardship that the CPC has shown coming out of the board of selectmen and the planning board. So one of the things that we would ask both boards to consider tonight, if you would care to do so, is your potential willingness to have our colleagues on the Cape Cod Commission step in, package really a concept to work with us as a community, as boards, to help ensure that a project of this importance is looked at thoroughly, thoughtfully, and not only take a look at the neighborhood impact, but regional impact, impact throughout the community, and to help us ensure that it's done in a quality way. And Chairman Herbston, Chairman Murphy, if that would be your desire to take some action in that direction, we'd welcome it. I'm certain we can answer some other questions that you may have on the, you know, the concept of facilitator for planning services. But I think this gives us a great opportunity for a partnership and seizing on the considerable expertise of the Commission and our chance to work with our colleagues there.
Thanks very much. I think we'd be remiss if we didn't offer the opportunity for Mr. Nizwicki to speak, at least to answer two questions that I have. One was, do you have the staff time available to assist us in this? And number two, has the Cape Cod Commission done anything similar to this in other towns? Paul? Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us. And both good questions. For roughly four years now, the Commission has had a reset program. So the whole idea behind this is that we have these services available at the Commission that we put in the towns, but it's really, it's not a top-down approach, it's to amplify those sort of town concerns and those design issues that you have going forward. So we do have staff, and we've done projects in Orleans, Chatham, Harwich, did a fairly extensive project in Yarmouth in the center there. We've worked in Bourne most of last year. We've got a really, a sizable project that's on the horizon in Sandwich, as well as working in the 132 area in Hyannis and previously having negotiated the Hyannis Growth Incentive Zone. So we have fairly extensive experience in these kind of projects. So we would be able to provide those services, working at your direction. Your professional staff would direct our staff. And so there's a lot of those questions that were raised earlier, questions I think we could answer. I think there are some exciting possibilities here, especially as it relates to maybe using, or taking a look at some of the alternative technologies for cluster wastewater systems that might support this, maybe some way you get some energy recovery back. But more importantly, it's a sizable project. And so when we get to the end of the project, our intent would be to leave you without any future regulatory review, try to get you that space, once it's planned on your own, to provide incentive to get the kind of development that you want to see there. Right on the horizon now is our plans... Right on the horizon now is our plans to look at innovation districts around the Cape, so that we can maximize the potential impact of the Open Cape Broadband Initiative. And this might be one of those areas that we might want to look at, having gigabyte access to those residences and those professional office spaces that might be included, and maybe the ability to bring some light industrial back. So we would look very comprehensively at all of that, done a lot of that work in the community. And I think it comes to the added benefit of less regulation on the other side, once we're done, which, and when you can give any developer a clear, consistent path towards development, you've actually relieved them of a great financial burden, and I think that that's a strong incentive for people to go in there and do good design, do the right thing.
Thank you. I do not want to be the only one who'd ask Mr. Nizwicky questions. So are there other questions from the board? Yes, Jim?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I have a question that goes back a little ways. I wanted to, I heard something I want to talk about before, about the transfer of development Is this something that the town, on this, they, what we talked about in our rezoning of different areas, that we're going to make up for losing this area by rezoning other areas? But I think what I hear going on here, Heather alluded to it first, and then Kevin, and then Brian, or Brian then Kevin, are they actually going to take the rights of this and sell it to another developer as part of the financing package? Is that what I heard? I heard those words, or am I mistaken?
This is alternative. Right now, the community has an asset here in regards to the number of units that could be developed, pursuant to a discretionary incentive. Right now, we're hearing that this development is somewhere between 20 and 30 units, but the value there is, the build-out there is 60.
Right.
That's what I'm getting at. This is just going to be sold to somebody?
Lights, yeah, sure.
I will later.
Okay. My question is simple, is it going to be sold, and does it, does it have to be sold in the same area, it could go anywhere in town?
Not now. That's why we would ask for this type of technical assistance that would be able to have, use the asset, because the bylaw we have today is too ancient.
What is that bylaw that allows the transfer of those rights? What's, which one?
It's a zoning bylaw today, it was written by--
I'm familiar, what's the number, though?
24174.
It was a great by name, a man named John Witten. I saw the details.
Okay, I just, I thought that's where you were going with this, and I just wanted to understand it.
Correct.
Any other questions for Mr. Nizwicky before we discuss amongst ourselves?
Well, I just have a comment. And I would call your attention to the, to the article in the Cape Cod Times today about last night's town meeting in Yarmouth, where the town meeting approved the project that Paul Nizwicky just referred to. It's the project along Route 28, where the Commission, and I'm not going to talk about the project, you can maybe summarize it for me, but the creation of four different types of villages. And I happened to see the former fire chief from Yarmouth today, who was at the town meeting last night, and he told me he has never, ever seen the town of Yarmouth come together in, in the shortest possible time, even though the meeting went on for a while, the moderator just let everybody talk on. But it was clear from the very beginning that there was near unanimous support for this project. And that's huge. That's it, and the paper can help describe for you what happened. And maybe Paul could just comment on it to give you a sense of what the Commission can actually bring to a community and by working with the community to achieve these types of results and development.
Yeah, two years ago, the Commission worked in Yarmouth the same way. So we put 1,000 hours into the town of Yarmouth, then we focused on that area in Yarmouth, between the Parker River Bridge and Skull Island, just to pick up my reference. And it's a fairly extensive area, and it has real challenges when it comes to redevelopment there. But we were able to work on four different nodes down there. The Planning Board in Yarmouth wrestled with it for a while, they came forward with zoning. They have a fairly well-capitalized local investor with a project that's ready to go on one of those, on one end of that, on the Skull Island, and about 30 acres. And it's gratifying to see that work, having focused the Planning Board now lead to a real project in Yarmouth that we think is beneficial.
Yes, Kevin?
One of my first questions, when we discussed bringing in the Cape Cod Commission, was, and this will drastically change the perception in folks' minds in the town of Falmouth, because most of the time when we talk the Cape Cod Commission, it's on a regulatory basis. Most people, people in Falmouth don't always think of the Cape Cod Commission being able to come out and actually help us to help plan and do a specific project. This is cutting edge for the town of Falmouth in our partnership. Most of the, most of our dealings with the Cape Cod Commission have been on a regulatory basis, and they've been very, quite helpful. But we do contribute quite a bit of financial resources to the Cape Cod Commission. And I think this is a great opportunity for us specifically to bring them into our community to help us. One of the original things we talked about was the potential to hire an outside consultant. We would have used town funds, which are CPC funds, to be able to do that. This really takes part of the financial burden off the town's shoulders as well, to be able to use their resources, number one. But number two, we have a group that actually knows Cape Cod. They know what we do in this community, so they already know, they're up to speed what's going on. I will say I was a little cautious when the Cape Cod Commission came in, and I thought, well, is this going to bog the process down? Because is this going to bring a regulatory aspect to it? And I've been reassured that that's not the case.
No, I mean, it's a planning process. The planning process in the end will probably lead to regulatory relief, so it's actually the opposite of entering into regulation. Prior to being the Executive Director at the Commission, I was Assistant Town Manager in the town of Barnstable, and we did the first growth incentive zone on the highest main street. And had an opportunity to revisit that earlier this year, and just taking a look at four parcels that were blighted and abandoned, and are now mixed-use parcels down there. And some of the property values there are 426% what they were before. So we know that good design, growth in areas where you have adequate infrastructure accommodated, is not only a good thing, it is a necessary thing, that when communities stop growing, they start dying. And so, you know, that has been a change in philosophy at the Commission, which has led to a second growth incentive zone that we approved of Buzzards Bay just a couple of months ago, and a couple of other applications for raised thresholds that we anticipate to see and that are in your future.
Other questions? Would you anticipate introducing new ideas other than just the housing, when you mentioned the mixed use in the Yarmouth? Is that something you might try to sway us toward?
Well, no, our duty is not to persuade, it's to perform for your local staff. To the extent that we start to look at these developments and see particular synergies, that once you get into the details, you may see connections that you didn't see originally, then I think obviously we would bring them up and talk about different ways to approach this. And it's always my desire to have an end product that, that really gives you alternatives, rather than one particular optimal design.
Thank you. Just so you know, when you present alternatives to our town meeting--
Yeah.
--it can take a long time.
Well, I'm going to present the alternatives to you.
Thank you.
Pick one.
Thank you very much. Other questions? Well, thank you very much for coming tonight, both of you.
Thank you.
It was an extra effort, I'm sure, on your part. And do not feel obligated to remain here after, after we move on to the next item, because I know you have families too and other obligations.
Yes. We would, although it's not necessary for the Planning Board to engage this, we would like to be able to make sure that everybody's on board with the same type of process. We would like to have a vote on this this evening, to be able to move forward with engaging the Cape Cod Commission, to be able to be a facilitator and help move us forward in this. So I would like to do that as a joint vote, if that's all right with you. Of course, I'd like to look for a motion from one of my members to be able to put that on the table, to be able to engage the Cape Cod Commission, and then look for a second and move forward.
How do you all feel about that?
Does a joint vote have legal, suppose--
Well--
I mean--
I would think, I would think that we could--
I mean, if we had two separate votes, one after the other--
Each board could vote by itself. But I do, and I don't mind asking a member of the Planning Board to--
That's fine.
--entertain a similar motion. But before we do that, is there any other discussion about how you feel about asking the Cape Cod Commission to participate in this, in this, this planning of this, of this area? Anybody have any questions?
Understanding that it is not, non-regulatory participation, but purely a planning participation, I have no problem with that.
Anyone else? Yes, Jim?
Well, I'm uncomfortable with it, only because my only experience with the Cape Cod Commission is regulatory, and it's like, to use an expression, letting the fox into the hen house. I really am concerned about it.
Okay. Even though you understand there's--
I heard the words tonight, but it's new to me.
Okay.
It's new to all of us.
It's new to me.
Other comments, yes?
Along those lines, would it be possible to get a better description, a better outline as to what the Commission would be doing for us, before we go ahead and say, yes, we want to entertain this? And I don't know if it's something that can be done in a five-minute discussion, or if it's something that, you know, require an actual outline of process or services or whatnot.
When you, when you entered into working with these other towns, did you give them some type of formal document or presentation before they voted to solicit your expertise?
We wind up with a scope of work, because it's important to have, arrive at expectations around performance, priority of beginning the work. It's good for us, it's good for the town. I think in different cases, sometimes a vote has come before that, authorize us to enter into a scope of work, which we brought back to you. Or we could, or we could develop a scope and bring it back for a vote at a different time.
How quickly could you give us a scope, each individual board, so we could vote on it outside of tonight's meeting?
Yeah, a couple of weeks.
A couple of weeks?
Absolutely.
Is that more satisfactory to the people here, sitting here now? How do you feel about it? Jim?
That's what I'd like to understand.
You'd rather see the scope of work--
Absolutely.
--or we vote?
Absolutely.
Other, other opinions?
I would too, yes.
Okay. Kevin, you feel like you'd like to go tonight?
Well, I, basically, we've slowed the process of the Community Preservation Committee. Also, they have a partner working forward in the partnership. I think the vote we would look for tonight was to, to get a scope of work, and then the final version would be approved by the different boards. You know, devil is always in the detail, as we all said. But I think, you know, we're not going to have this opportunity in three weeks to have a joint meeting saying we'd like to develop a scope of work. You're going to have that opportunity to say whether you're on board with it or not, and then our board will as well. So that, that's really, I think, that we're looking for, to come out of here, is that we're united in forming the idea that we can engage the Cape Cod Commission, provided their scope of work will be acceptable to us. Of course, Brian and Heather will be the ones working closely with the Cape Cod Commission to develop the scope.
If, Rich?
Well, I spoke just now, I was saying that I will take these people at their word, that it's not going to be a regulatory exercise, and it would be a great benefit, and I believe, will do a great benefit to the town, I believe, that we get the planning expertise of the Commission, on the understanding that it's not regulatory. And ultimately, if it comes within their regulatory jurisdiction anyway, it's going to one. If it doesn't, it doesn't. But, but we're not buying into another level of regulation with this, we're just simply buying into cooperative means of planning, which I think is a good idea.
Heather, you're at the podium, you have some, a comment?
I think between Paul and Chairman Murphy, you're exactly where I was hoping you'd get to. I think it's important for those of us that have been meeting with the CPC to get a sense of both of these bodies together, that you have an interest in moving forward. And I don't necessarily think you need to vote on a scope, but just a sense that the two boards are in support of us moving forward. No problem bringing something back to each of the boards separately for their approval and ratification.
Yeah, I have a compromise to propose here, that we, unless there are objections, that we agree conceptually to ask the Cape Cod Commission to provide us with a scope of work, and that we will vote on it individually as soon as we have a chance to review it. Yes, Doug?
If we follow that path, my other question is, what happens if one board votes yes and the other board votes no?
Then I guess we go back to the drawing board.
And I would encourage us to maybe decide that one board is going to, you know, at this point, agree on the scope, or agree on the concept, and also agree which board will make that decision, as opposed to leaving up for those two future votes, and just potentially dragging this out much further.
Comments? Yes, Pat?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that Doug has made a good point, as well as you have too. But I do agree, we don't need a vote, but that we would, we would request that the Cape Cod Commission provide us with a scope of services that would meet the approval of the Town Manager and the Assistant Town Manager, and that it come to us. But I think we should meet together again and discuss the scope of services as two boards. I mean, if we're into this together, then I think we ought to discuss it together. Because if you have questions and we don't know what they are, and we bring up questions and you don't know what our concerns might be, I would think we would be in a better position if we had a very brief meeting, either on a Monday or a Tuesday, and we discussed the scope of services together, so that we, both of us know exactly what we're, what we're engaging.
Other comments, Pat?
I agree with Pat. We're, we're looking at something that we have not looked at before, because it's not just this small property. We're looking at a whole area for redevelopment that is currently being used in particular ways. And I think that another set of eyes from an agency that has done this sort of planning would be invaluable. And there's another reason to look at a scope of work like this together, because we may have other input that we want to put into that scope of work and enlarge it, or scratch some things out of it. And it's going to be better if we can work together, you know--
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion--
Yeah.
I would make a motion for the Planning Board's consideration, that we agree in principle that the town should go forward with this project in cooperation with the Cape Cod Commission, that our professional staff be encouraged and directed to work with them closely on that, and that we would like to see a scope of work for the project within three weeks. And that would be the motion, that that's all we would be saying tonight.
As for Planning Board only, then, all right, I'll--
You'd like to second in on the Planning Board?
I'll attend a second.
Second.
Anybody on the Planning Board?
It's seconded.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that was a rather lengthy motion, but briefly what it's saying is that the Planning Board agrees to soliciting this--
In principle--
--this input from the Cape Cod Commission, and it be limited to the planning function only. Did I summarize that correctly? And that it should work with our staff? Okay, this is, this is a vote just for the Planning Board. Any, now, further discussion from Planning Board members? Okay. All right, then, for Planning Board members only, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? And the motion carries. Now, Mr. Chairman of the Board of Selectment, would you like to--
Well, I'd open that up to my board for motion, but you folks are probably only specifically talking about issues like planning. But our board will be talking about impact issues and help with some review of finances in the construction and things of that nature, which they have expertise on. Again, we're moving from what you guys do versus what we do. And this is a town project, building project, that would be overseen basically by the Town Manager's Office, but under our direction, of course, is the policymakers. So our motion would be a little broader versus just the planning issue that Richard spoke about. So that, that's really what I would look for. And again, get back at scope of work, that would include that.
I think one thing that we have to keep in mind, from not only our perspective, but theirs, is that this plan will have great asset value for the community, and we need to-- we need to understand what that is when we, when we look at the scope of services, and look at the potential outcomes of the, of the whole area, not, not just the housing part. But where it creates real asset value for the community, I think is a major piece of the, of the project.
I think it's very important that we distinguish the fact that this does not just apply to the Community Preservation Committee's Springbar's Road project, that we are talking about a much larger area than that. Is that your understanding?
That understanding really will be set by the staff. You know, I, I want a scope of work too, because I, I want to know what your expectations of us are upfront. What I will say is that you have a significant level of planning expertise on staff in Falmouth, some really good planning staff that the other towns on the Cape don't necessarily have. So our attempt is really to fill gaps, or produce economic analysis that you don't have. So that's part of getting that scope worked out. The other thing that we like to do in these projects is to expedite work product, to get it done as quickly as possible. So we like to work in six-month intervals, with a work product back to you at that time. So in working with Heather and Brian, I think we can put together a scope, we'd be happy to come back and answer any questions on that scope, taking things up, putting things in. I'd also like to show you maybe some of the work that we've done in other communities, so you can get a sense of what the end product might look like.
So then, do you want to provide us with a draft of a scope of work, or are you going to provide us with a final document?
I think we would provide, work with staff to put in front of you a scope of work that is, is, could be amended, you know? So probably draft is the better term to use.
Yeah. Yes, Heather?
The only thing I want to add about the scope, and I think the track is actually the right one, is that there may be tracks within the scope. There may be a track for the issues that have immediate impact on the adjacent issues related to development of Springbar's Road, and those might have a timeframe associated with them. Some of the larger-scale planning issues probably have a longer time horizon associated with them, so they may be broken down into a couple of different pieces. And I think we can work together with, with the Cape Cod Commission to put that in a framework that can advance certain things at different paces than others.
I know for sure that the Community Preservation Committee is, would be most gratified if the process was compressed. Yes, Kevin?
In, in all fairness to the Community Preservation Committee, it appears that this is expanding versus what we had talked about. What we had talked about was the visioning of this project, and how it's going to fit in with that general neighborhood. Our discussions now have started to creep into the greater area of that neighborhood. And I need to be fair to the Community Preservation Committee, because that's not where our discussion was. Where we're really looking right now, in the near future, and that's where, let's narrow it down, the near future is this particular project, and how this project will fit in to this neighborhood, and what we need to do to get it to fit into that neighborhood, whether it be sidewalks, connections, things of that nature. So I, I want to make sure that I'm fair. I realize that Brian took us on a, a vision of that whole area, but that's your job. Our job, really, why we came at the joint meeting tonight, is we wanted to make sure that we were able to move this part of the project forward, the track that I guess--
I think what you'll see is, is a plan that is almost inconcentric service. So you see a higher level of specificity around a particular project, and then you see other suggestions the further out that you get. So you can see how that project's going to fit into the overall plan, without having to arrive at that level of detail. So that's, that's one way we'll be able to explain.
Yes. Peter Clark?
I will speak for myself, but I know Ken Buckland has also spoken about the importance that this project can have in those ripple effects on the rest of the community, and I'm glad you're looking at the broader community. I do want to simply hope that as the scope of work gets developed, we'll be kept informed and have some opportunity to have a little input to it as it develops. Thank you.
Well, you'll have a lot of input. Yes?
Yeah, it's just better planning to take the wider view first, and then narrow it later, rather than to go forward with a multimillion-dollar project that's very narrow, and then discover later that you have problems that you hadn't anticipated. So it's just better planning to proceed that way. We don't, you know, just, if we get into a large scope of work, we can discuss it and decide, maybe we don't need to do that much, but at least we've looked at the ramifications of the larger picture. So that's just better planning.
Okay. Final question, final comments?
Virginia.
Oh, yes, all right, yeah, yes. Mr. Rivesa?
Hi, I'm Virginia Rivesa, and I'm treasurer of Save Little Pond, Inc. I've been spending probably two or three years following this project faithfully, to keep tabs on what was going on, and the CPC has been very generous and always put that portion of their agenda at the top, so I didn't have to stay through the whole meeting. However, I feel right now like it's the bottom of the ninth, there's two outs, full count. And my pitcher just hit the batter in the head. I mean, I am totally floored. The first time we, and I think the CPC, heard about a vision, and I can't believe it was almost a year ago, that there was that meeting at the Lawrence School, that Heather got up and talked about a future vision or a possible vision, and we were all like, well, what is this vision? And my gut is telling me that, having been on the planning board a little bit, that I'm sure the offices have heard rumblings early on about all these different things that were going to start taking place, like the FW web, and, you know, now we're talking about they're surveying or whatever the plaza for future changes or what have you. And I'm, I mean, obviously, they knew about this, or somebody had an inkling something was going on in December of last year. And they allowed the CPC to continue to go through their process? You know, I continue to spend my time going to meetings, and now, all of a sudden, it's like, well, wait a minute, we want to take another look at this, because there's stuff going on. And I guess, I do have a little concern, and I do have a question for the commission, if that's okay, that when they look at, since they're going to focus on this parcel as the first sort of piece of their vision, or their recommendations, or whatever, are they, do they normally look at everything, as far as the topography, what's involved in developing that parcel? Because I'm really taken aback by this mixed-use business. I mean, the neighbors there already are tolerating that there's going to be more affordable housing in our area. Now, if you're going to start doing more, what I would call intensive use with mixed use, because now you're going to bring business in there potentially, and it's a very sensitive area, there's going to be a lot of fill required to be brought in there. And I just wonder if all that information, you know, the fill requirements, the topography of the land, is going to be part of that recommendation? Or do they just look at general use, infrastructure, that kind of thing? That would be a question.
Well, yes, all right, we can, yeah, go ahead. Mr.--
It's a good question. We're not going to leave you with engineering plans, our, our designs are a little bit bigger than that. If, if mixed use is not appropriate for the area, then it wouldn't be considered. I like the baseball analogy, but I would consider our role as being more of a closer. What we really want to come in, at the end, amplify the staff's ability to really close this thing, close the deal and get it done as short as possible. And that's my comment.
It's my understanding from the conversations I've heard here tonight, that the, that the reservations that the, that the Board of Selectmen have, has to do with the ramifications of this development in the entire area. That's the way I, that's the way I take it. And so, the fact that Kevin is speaking, that he is more specific, site-specific, on the Community Preservation proposal to develop the housing, is, is somewhat different from what I've heard from other people here. And so I, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just saying that as far as I'm concerned, what I've heard from all of the conversations here, are that mostly, the Board of Selectmen have issues with the ramifications of, of traffic and sewer and everything else in the entire area, and not site-specific. Yes?
Yes, and so do we. As Brian mentioned, we will be concerned about traffic in and out of the site, even with just simply 20 residences. The question as to, are we going to want sidewalks that whole length of that road, at least from this site down to the plaza and so forth? As Kevin mentioned, the issue of wastewater is going to be a huge issue, and they're necessarily going to involve questions arising from economies of scale. So that if you have something, wastewater confined solely to that one site, then you're going to get into economic issues that, that might be better resolved by expanding the project, at least for that part of the project, to achieve better economies and a better result. So I think that's why, what I said, we want to look at a bigger picture first, and then if we can narrow it down, we can, as opposed to starting out with something small, and then getting into, oh, well, we didn't think of that. And then going back to town meeting, and they say, well, why didn't you think of that? So I think it's better to encourage the bigger picture first, doesn't mean we have to vote for it in the end, just means we're going to get a good look at it.
Yes. Laura Shufell from the Housing, Housing--
Massachusetts Housing Partnership. Laura Shufell from the Massachusetts Housing Partnership.
Massachusetts.
Thank you for having me here, and thank you for engaging MHP to help the CPC go through the process of developing a draft RFP for the site. I think that with the discussion site, first of all, I want to clarify a couple of things. First of all, Mr. Brown, this was bought with CPC funds, this property, and mixed use would not be allowed unless it was, some of the money was paid back to the Community Preservation, because commercial use is not allowed under CPCs. I just want to make that clear. It could be done, but it would have to be, you know, proportioned out, that money given back to the CPC. Secondly, Mr. Murphy, you had said it had to go back to town meeting. This property was purchased for the, with the intent of affordable housing, it was part of the motion, so I don't believe, and I've talked to attorneys, that you would have to, you purchased it for that purpose, so it doesn't have to then be declared surplus, that's only land that you've already previously owned. So those are my two clarifications. And I just wanted to say that Mass Housing Partnership has appreciated the, you know, the opportunity to come into Falmouth and assist you with this project. We have spent hundreds, hundred of hours, I have spent hundreds of hours, and my staff has spent hundreds of hours working on this. We've got to a place, I think, where we can say, you know, we brought you here, we're happy to, to help going forward, but it looks like this is going to be part of a bigger process that goes beyond the scope that, that you engaged us for, the Board of Selectmen engaged us to help the CPC. If there's any, you know, further work that you want us to do, you all have my contact to get in touch with me. But I just wanted to thank both Boards, Board of Selectmen, and certainly, it's been a pleasure working with the CPC, and, and all the public meetings and participation of the neighborhood has been, has been great, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, one more comment from the public. Ms. Hayward?
Nancy Hayward, West Falmouth. I'm going to mention one thing, which I hope everybody knows. I want to comment on Little Pond. Little Pond is one of the coastal estuaries that was under the Mass Estuaries Project. And I would like to point out that report for this pond is in, and Little Pond is to receive zero nitrogen. I was very upset, because I missed the Conservation Commission hearing on the web project, and the web project is having a bunch of new basins and things, but they're simply having, as Mr. Fox is shaking his head, however, they're not having any upgraded nitrogen removal. And I think that that's one thing that plays into this Little Pond project. And I was hoping that even though the wastewater comes down into West Falmouth Harbor, and the Coalition for Buzzard Bay, for which I did water sampling for a number of years, even though that wastewater would go up to the wastewater treatment plant, I was hoping that this would get hooked up to the town wastewater system, so that there was zero nitrogen put into the pond. That's my statement. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, yes, Kevin?
Just one, one last thing, and Nancy, the question was about sewage. More, more dramatically, the question is aimed at whether or not it would be a pump station or a gravity feed, or whether we would have to tie in, i.e. the mall, because we go buy their property. Those are questions, not only questions that we have to raise, but come through the DEP. So, and one of the review, one of the reviews of our plan happens to be the Cape Cod Commission as well. So it would make some synergy to be able to have them involved as we look at this project. I surely am hoping that Laura's comments were not comments that, that she wants to leave this project, because we surely want her to stay involved, and we surely want the RFP to move forward. We just want to be able to review this as a community, and make sure that we can embrace this as a community. And make sure that we get everybody on board, and that it's a financial success and a success when it's built. We appreciate all your guidance, but we surely don't want to go it alone either. So we want your group to stay involved, and I want to say that in a public setting, because I think that's important. The idea and the ideal of putting this together tonight was not to alienate anybody, but to try to bring everybody on board on the same page. I know that it sounds like we're going outside of the scope of this project, but they have a, they have their review meeting in the planning board. The Board of Selectmen will look at this as an individual product, project, and what it's going to do to wastewater, financial stability, as well as whether it's not it's going to be a success. So I hope that your comments were not, well, I'm done with the project, because I surely don't want you to be done with the project, and your group. Last thing, I, I don't know, we still never got a motion from the Board of Selectmen. If they don't want to do a motion on that, that's fine, we can do it as, at a further date. Richard put a motion on for the planning board, we never actually did one, so it's up to the Board of Selectmen whether they want to enter into a scope and bring back the final scope for, for review and a vote of the Board of Selectmen.
Feel free to do that now, if you'd like.
Well, I don't make motions, it would have to be one of my members, so if they're interested.
Well, I would make a motion that we, that we participate in the engagement of the Cape Cod Commission in developing a, a scope of services, that will ultimately be reviewed by the town manager, the assistant town manager, and the planning director, and then brought back to us, I'd say, as a group for our approval and our vote, to move the project forward.
I'll second that.
So then the motion on the floor, any discussion from the Board of Selectmen?
Just, I'd like to reiterate, I think, that what both Pat and Pat said, having that as a group meeting to vote it, I think would be much more efficient than trying to have that as two separate meetings.
It sounds like a great idea. So without further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close? The ayes aye. Thank you.
All right, I'd like to wrap up the, the first item on the agenda. I wonder, Heather, have we covered sufficient discussion this evening to satisfy what your comments were earlier? I'm glad.
Do you need to be excused for a minute?
Yes, sir. Okay. Well, then, at that point, we will move on to the next item, and thanks you for the folks in the audience for coming, who were interested in that first item. The second item on the agenda is a discussion of Article Number Three, the annual Fall Town Meeting, concerning wind energy systems. Our vice chairman, Pat Kerplin, has been dealing with this issue since its inception, more than, I don't know, how many months, 18 months maybe? Anyway, she's going to speak to that, and then we'll, feel free to ask questions.
Keith, this kind of is a very large surprise to me, because Brian said, no, it was not us who put it on, and it was not me who was supposed to speak to it, I think. So--
Okay, I had written down Pat. No, you're going to speak to it. Excuse me. Our conversation the other day, I wrote P-A-T. I don't spell mine that way. Sorry about that, folks.
It's okay.
It's great to be recognized as being human and making mistakes.
It's great to be recognized as being human and making mistakes.
The item is on the agenda tonight, after discussing it with, Julie and with Kevin, one of the questions that has come up in regards to Article Three at the special town meeting, is whether or not it would preclude some of the consensus building options that are perhaps on the table for discussion in regards to Article One and Two. And the question that has come up is whether or not, if in fact, one of the options would be to relocate these turbines, would this article at this time preclude? And the short answer for the Board of Selectmen is, yes, it would absolutely. I wanted to make sure the Board of Selectmen do understand, however, that at this upcoming town meeting, this article will be fully vetted and discussed, I'm sure, and that the moratorium on turbines is still in effect. No matter what happens at this upcoming town meeting, the rubber will hit the road, actually at the April Town Meeting, when the moratorium is actually lifted, my sense is that the planning board will take the discussion that happens here in a few weeks back, because there are meetings for further deliberations. But that was the question that was posed, and I said I would answer it here tonight, and that's how I answer whatever questions that you might have.
Okay, so, are there further questions from either board, but primarily from the Board of Selectmen?
The reason that this is on the agenda tonight is because, under past chairman Flynn's guidance, we entered into a consensus building process with the neighbors, and as well as with different factions within this community with the wind turbines. The board had asked me to sit with the neighbors to get them to participate, and originally, they did not participate in the discussions and in the process. One of the commitments the Board of Selectmen has echoed to the neighbors and to all groups is that nothing is off the table as we move forward to build and come up with a solution. We wanted to discuss this this evening, because personally, I didn't want to blindside the planning board by going against something that they're in the process of developing, meaning the fact that, I surely didn't want to speak against your article at town meeting unless we discussed it tonight, but I think it would take off one of the valuable options that we would have definitely before the Spring Town Meeting, or maybe at a special town meeting that the Board of Selectmen would call. That was one of the commitments we made to everyone that sat at that table. When we built consensus, we came up with a viable option. If it was necessary, we would actually call a special town meeting. If the timing is not exactly right, then we would call, come to the Spring Town Meeting. By all stretches of the imagination, April would be the drop dead date of when we would hope to have an actual final conclusion on what our options would be. By voting this forward and moving forward, we appreciate all your work, but we also say that it's going to take away a valuable option, and could alienate some of the folks that are sitting at that table. And we wanted to talk about it, plain and simple. I know you've done a lot of work on it, I believe it is, it's a two-thirds majority vote, and I don't know whether this is a vote that you're looking to get one bite of the apple and hope that it passes in April. I'm sure you're not going to tip your cards on that, but we wanted to basically talk about it here this evening, so that we at least let you know where we were coming from as a Board of Selectmen.
I have a question about something you just said. You said April would be a drop dead date for, for your options. You don't mean a drop dead date for selecting one of the options, you mean only that you will have the options by then? Is that what you said?
No, our goal was to have the option to buy the Fall Town Meeting, because we did not have the neighbors participating. That goal was extended. We have, I'm going to probably let Pat and Doug speak to this, because they're, that are attendees at their meetings, and I believe there's a December timeframe that they're looking to be able to turn them back over to the Board of Selectmen, so if I can.
Well, yeah, I know, but what you said, Kevin, was, maybe you just misspoke, but you said that the drop dead date for the options would be Spring Town Meeting, and I'm asking you, did you mean selecting one of the options, or just having the options available to you?
That that would be the Board of Selectmen selecting an option that we would move forward.
Selecting an option.
Selecting, selecting an option, and that we would be putting, whatever option we would choose, with the exception of status quo, would take some kind of town meeting vote.
Right. Not necessarily. Okay, so, anyway, Kevin wanted to ask somebody else on the, on the planning, I mean, on the Board of Selectmen to speak. It's you, Doug?
Sure, and I would reiterate, I would support what Kevin's saying about the potential of this bylaw taking off a, not to say a bargaining piece, but our commitment saying all options were on the table, we are considering everything possible. Pat and I have been going to these missing meetings as observers, we're not participants in the discussion, but that still is an option that they are presenting and discussing the possibility of moving them to another site in Thalmouth. And to have that option taken away would force me to have to argue against the bylaw at this point. I'd have some other reasons I have against it also, but what the group is working for is to ideally get us the options, the Board of Selectmen the options, by December, if not January 1st is their, sort of their drop dead date, so that we can either by the Spring Town Meeting or the Spring Special Town Meeting, be able to have, if we need to, an article to bring to the town meeting. There are some options they're considering that would not need, because there would be no ramifications from the budget, a vote of town meeting, but are just options that the Selectmen could choose to proceed with, and not have to go back to town meeting with to get support.
Okay, yeah.
But what Kevin said is, we have committed to April 2013, we will have decided what we're going to do.
I just want to backtrack a little bit, I think we're getting ahead of ourselves. Unless, what I'm hearing is, I thought we had a moratorium in place, and that no wind turbines go in, unless I'm hearing that the Selectmen have the right to go above the moratorium and make a consensus group, no matter whether the moratorium is in place or not. Am I missing the point here?
Well, the moratorium is up, is over at the Spring Town Meeting.
So it happens simultaneously?
No, there are two different issues, if I may. One issue is the moratorium, the moratorium is over in April. If your bylaw, your zoning change comes about, that would take, that would take that off the table forever.
No, I know, but we, the reason why the moratorium was put in place is because we weren't ready for the bylaw, because we need to have one or the other. And what you're saying is you're going to wait till there's a gap that's not there, and then move.
Let me put it to, probably a better way to put this to you, would be that you'll also have an option to bring this back in the Spring Town Meeting. Right now, if you move this forward, it takes an option.
I understand that, I think that's wrong, I agree with you. What I'm just saying, what about the moratorium, and you're saying you're going to wait till that expires, and then move ahead with the consensus?
No, we're moving ahead with the consensus, we'll make a decision, you will see an article in Spring Town Meeting of how the Board of Selectmen plans on solving this problem, and whether it be, you know, another location in this community, or one of the other, of the other options that they're dealing with, one way or the other, we will have something for Spring Town Meeting.
Rich?
Yes, I wasn't here for the first part of this discussion, I was called away on urgent business, but however, I understand what this discussion is centering on, is having to do with the Selectmen's very difficult issue in negotiations on some existing wind turbines. And I tend to agree with the position the Selectmen are taking, that our going forward on this particular proposed bylaw would, in some respects, tie their hands, and that's what I was kind of getting, getting at, when we were discussing this, this is a matter of public record, I'm not talking out of school here, when I proposed that, when we were talking about accessory uses, that those accessory uses be for any private development of, use of wind turbines, but that did not bind the town. Because the wind turbines we're talking about here in West Thalmouth are not accessory uses, and if we were to adopt this bylaw, now, in November, and the Selectmen should find that it would be an easy out, and a most efficient out, and most cost beneficial out, to move them from where they are now, because right now, they're a pre-existing use on that site, move them where they are now to a more suitable location, they would be, that would make it impossible if they had to show that it was an accessory use. It's not an accessory use. And that was part of my thinking, my reasoning, when I didn't want to go, when I did want to put into this bylaw, just a minor change in language that said, except for municipal, and I was going to include in institutional uses, but at least except for municipal uses, it has to be an accessory use. Now, that, if, but, you know, I think maybe we should wait till April, rather than confuse the issue like that, and really talk with the Selectmen about their concerns.
Brian, I think you might have a comment.
Right, what I think, what I'm hearing here is that, no matter what transpires here in November, that the planning board needs to be aware that there's probably going to be some discussion with regards to a regulatory solution here at April.
Yes, Pat?
Okay, I think.
This Ben.
Oh, okay, keep pointing me, so I.
Pick a Ben.
I think we're probably getting a little bit too bent out of shape too soon, because we've got an eight-page bylaw going before town meeting, and just from prior experience, when you've got something so complex as this, it is highly unlikely, even though we could wish that it would pass, it is highly unlikely that it will pass in the November town meeting. Even though we have had three public meetings as we progressed, and gotten all the input we could possibly get on it, and incorporated all of that input into our thoughts and into the bylaw, we could anticipate that it would be passed. Okay, let's, let's say that it is passed. Even if it is passed, we've got April Town Meeting to put something else into it, an amendment that could alleviate the town's concerns, and that would most likely happen. But I think what also has to be realized here too, is that if a turbine bylaw is not passed by, at the very latest, the April Town Meeting, as of May 1st, the moratorium ceases to exist, and we go back to the current bylaw, which gives precious little guidance to anybody, it does not put any kind of parameters into, on any wind turbines that could be proposed, and once it's proposed, it is grandfathered under that old bylaw. So it is absolutely critical that we get something in place. So the conversation that is going on here tonight, although I understand the concerns of the group that's meeting, I don't think they need to be as perturbed as they are, or as they are being portrayed to be, that there's no, by no means, any attempt to undercut them, that if something comes up that cannot be incorporated in the bylaw, if it passes in November, we can certainly do something to amend it, to allow, if, the only thing my understanding is, if the choice is to move it someplace else, on town property, then we're going to have to amend it in some fashion to allow that to happen.
Pat?
Well, I, my concern is that this, this was a very difficult process to even put together with the various stakeholders, and particularly the neighbors. You probably know that for the first three weeks, they didn't come, and now they're there. There's a significant tension level in the group at every meeting, as I'm sure you must know. Fortunately, we have a very experienced facilitator, who is just so aware of that, and keeps it moving forward. And as Doug said, we made a commitment to the group that everything was on the table, everything, and that they had free rein, in a sense of coming up with, with options that they could all come to agreement on. And that's where they are now, they're in the process of that. I think to have another discussion about wind turbines at the meeting, at the meeting, at town meeting, could be, could be a diversion that would raise other concerns on the part of the group. I don't know what they might be, but I'm sure they are going to want to know if anything in that, in that proposal affects any of the packages that they come up with for options, and if they do, it's, and it's going to divert their attention back to turbines again in the future. I'm just, I don't know, I'm really uncomfortable about the fact of having another turbine discussion for another reason, right in the middle of this, when, when we're so close to getting to an agreement on, on the option packages. Now, I understand what you're saying, that the, that the moratorium, and unfortunately, it's too late to put an article in to continue it.
Can't.
I know, you can't do that, but.
No, but I mean, we can.
You can't extend it for, anyway, even if you had the article, you can't extend it beyond it. So I understand that. So maybe, I think, the thing that has to have happened, is that somehow, we need to let the group know how the passage of this article would affect the work that they're doing right now, and what they might, might come to agreement on going forward. It probably won't, it won't happen before town meeting, but I think they might wonder how this is going to affect what they're doing. Is it going to make a difference? Is it just another discussion that's off somewhere else, and it has no effect on the group and what they're coming up with, except for that one impact that it does have, is that you can't move them? So I think it's, I don't know, I'd be very concerned about it, knowing the tension level of the group, and, and the degree to which they are working so hard to stay together on this, and then, all of a sudden, now they're, they're faced with a discussion that they would rather not have.
Doug?
Because they won't know how it's going to impact their, their decisions about option packages.
Doug, a question from Mr. Curry. If we were to choose to ask Mr. Curry to add a line, saying that exempted from these provisions are the two existing wind turbines that the town owns at the wastewater treatment facility, we could do that, right? Is there?
Yes.
So, we have that option.
As an amendment, you mean, a town meeting?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Rich?
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me.
I just need to ask one follow-up question. Are you saying that we couldn't put an article before April's Town Meeting to extend the moratorium?
Correct.
Right.
We've had two years of moratorium, and my understanding is, that's it.
So, so in other words, you can't do another article to get an extension on that moratorium?
Correct.
Okay. Is that a state law?
Is it?
Brian, it's.
Is that a state law?
You can only have two years.
Is it maximum for a moratorium?
So we're between a rock and a hard place right now.
Time, time. Yes, Mr. Chair, zoning article, we don't want to be focusing on specific properties, identified properties. I do think, as a practical matter, if we simply put an amendment in, and I was thinking of doing this anyway, as I told you after our last meeting, that would exempt municipality from the effect of this bylaw. Now, as a practical matter, there's not going to be any rush, the town going out to spending millions of dollars on, on the wind turbines, the only ones they're going to be dealing with are the ones that are at issue. So if we just put in now, a municipal exemption, which doesn't tie the Selectmen's hands at all, I mean, they're not bound by this, we can later come back with an amendment that would apply to any future, if that's the sense of the board, that would apply to any future, you know, wind turbine development by the town, that would tie their hands. But if we just, because, look, I think this is a good bylaw, I don't agree with everything of it, but, but nothing is ever perfect, you know, we live in an imperfect world, and so, but this is a good bylaw, and I hate to see it, all our work on it go down the tubes because of this issue, when there is a very simple way of getting around the Selectmen's problems, which is simply to say, in this text right now, put an amendment on the floor, nothing in this bylaw, or it's a specific exemption for the town of Thalmouth. And then, and then, okay, and then that's not a, a site-specific concern, so you don't have to worry about spot zoning on it, and then, what you, and then, we're not going to go up and be spending any more money between now and April on new wind turbines, so there's no harm in that, that gives them the option of moving the turbine.
All right, that's not what Doug said. Doug said that he was looking for something that, that was specific to the existing municipal. turbines to, huh?
That's unnecessary, and to me, that raises an issue of being too site-specific for, for a general zoning bylaw. We can exempt a class, we could exempt the town, I believe, but we can't exempt specific properties.
Doug?
If you could get away with doing the, what Doug Brown suggested, I think he might politically have a little more chance for support, because the people who are concerned about the turbines felt that the town got away with something because there were a municipal permit. And they would then, I think, react to this negatively, not necessarily in the most rational way, but they would just say, see, that's the town trying to get away with something that no one else can get away with.
So you're saying that the exemption would be, could be a negative?
I think the exemption of wind one and wind tur, two would be, go a long way towards preventing the residents from feeling something was, you know, pulled out from underneath their feet, because they're very, very nervous. They're very, very suspicious that something is up to prevent them from doing what they're going to. I think that moving the turbines is very unlikely to be an option that they are going to choose, or is going to come forward. But I still think that to have that as being one that is still possible is very, very valuable to the residents.
Yeah, right, yes. Brent?
I hear what you're saying, Rich, but I don't think it'll fly at town meeting. I think that whether it's an exemption for the turbines or an exemption for the municipality, you're going to have everyone who's opposed to the turbines and their sympathizers and their neighbors are going to stand up and say, that's what got us into this trouble in the first place. It'll crash and burn. It seems to me, and I guess one of the questions that I have is, you know, Pat, you said that you don't expect that this would pass anyway at the fall town meeting. So from my perspective, I would argue, or vote against this article at this time, with the hope that it would come back in the spring. We've already said that we're hoping to have things wrapped up by the spring anyway, so it seems that that would be the opportunity then, would be to try to get this into place and do it then as opposed to now.
But if we don't do it, boy, we're stuck.
Exactly, and that's, that's my point.
But that might be the incentive for town meeting to take the action in the spring so that they didn't leave themselves exposed by not putting a new bylaw into place.
So, so, yes, Brent?
Okay, the general process, since I've been on the planning board, which, I'm on 12-year now, is that the more complex, the more complexity articles are, the less likely they are to pass the, at the first town meeting. You know that the senior care, that came back, what, three times before it passed, I believe? And it was a very complex thing. And every time we brought it before town meeting, we heard differences that we then incorporated into the bylaw. I am hoping, because we had so many public meetings and because we had so much input in the formation of this bylaw, that we don't have to have many changes if it doesn't pass. But the purpose of that is to get the people who have not had the input and they feel like they want to. I already know there's going to be significant opposition, there will be. It's just part, parcel of such a complex bylaw. There will be those who feel that there shouldn't be really many, any, any limits on turbines, period. Or there shouldn't be any limits on the amount of power that needs to be used on the property. Or, you know, I've got a whole list of questions to speak to that we've heard, and I'm, I'm hoping to be somewhat convincing. But at the same point, at the same time, the planning board listens to town meeting, we really listen closely to town meeting, and then we make changes in it. But if we don't bring it up now, if there is significant opposition without thought behind it, the town has to realize that come the April town meeting, if we do not have a good bylaw passed at that time, we have what is currently in place. Now, I don't think that solves any problems, nor is it going to make anybody too happy.
Brian?
Well, perhaps the solution is this. Instead of the kind of chronological exceptions, what you may want to think about, planning board, we can discuss this some more, is to offer an amendment that the bylaw should pass at this town meeting, does not take effect until May 1st, 2013, or unless there's an intervening vote of town meeting.
Okay.
That way, no matter what happens, it doesn't take effect until later on, it keeps that option open for everybody. So that might be something to consider at the municipal meeting.
Wait a minute, Rich, hang on, Rich.
I had my hand, I prolonged.
Rich, you've had ample opportunities to speak. I'd like to ensee whether there's anybody else. So, okay, Rich.
Okay, so, so Brian. If the new bylaw is enacted, it does not take effect until May.
Right.
And the moratorium then expires in April.
May 1st.
May 1st.
Moratorium expires on May 1st and the new bylaw picks up, okay. That means, that means that as a practical matter, the town of Falmouth cannot do anything, if, if moving the, the present wind turbines were an option, they can't do anything before or after. Because beforehand, there is, they just can't do it.
A moratorium.
There's a moratorium. And afterwards, they're subject to the same restrictions. So that doesn't make any real difference. Again, I would suggest, Brent, that I think the, once we, and I say we, the planning board and the selectmen, present this as a matter of dollars and expense, I, I trust, I, I rate a trust in my fellow town meeting members perhaps than you do. The question is this, we have some huge wind turbines, which, the wind turbines themselves won't comply with the standards of this zoning bylaw. And we have a situation where the use of these wind turbines is not what we call an auxiliary use, you know, it's, it's not just incidental to, to some other use. So those two, two, those wind turbines have no chance of succeeding in any case if the, the proposed bylaw applies to the town. So what, if we just simply have an exemption for the town of Falmouth, which frees the town of Falmouth to take those turbines, and if they can find a suitable place under, you know, what would have existed anyway, to, to put them, they can have their primary use, being that it is a primary wind farm use, they get that project done, and then nobody else can do it, and town, the town can't come in and put any more wind turbines up until they get a vote at the next town meeting to spend the money. So there, there's no danger there. So the simplest and most direct solution is to simply try to get this bylaw passed, this town meeting, with an amendment that exempts the town, with a promise to the, the town meeting that we're going to be back as soon as this existing problem is resolved at, in a way that will save the town the most bucks. As soon as that is done, then we will come back with an amendment that also includes the town in the bylaw, while the existing turbines, if they're relocated, are then protected as a prior non-conforming use.
Would you, would you include the effective date as May 1 of 2013?
Yeah.
In your amendment?
Yeah.
Okay.
As long as we have this temporary, and we would present it as a temporary exemption for the town, for the sole purpose of not tying our hands and costing us and wasting how many millions of dollars by just having to, to scrap those, those turbines.
But the, the, your, the exemption for the town would also be effective May 1, 2013?
Well, when the bylaw comes into effect, yes. So that then, the town would then have until the next meeting to get the, the project done, or at least done on paper.
Yes.
And then, you know, and permitted. And then, in fall, we could come back and we could amend the, the bylaw to include the town again for any future wind turbine development.
Okay. Yeah, Kevin?
And quite candidly, I'm, I like the thought process, you know, I'm not asking for you to make that decision tonight. I do know that I am going to put on a selectman's agenda before town meeting, whether it be the night of town meeting, about the board of selectmen supporting the idea to speak on behalf of the board at this time not to approve that bylaw, unless, of course, you come back with an amendment that we could support, only because we, we made a commitment to these neighbors, and we plan on holding that commitment, at least I do on my part. I surely haven't taken a vote, but I do know that we, I as chairman, will put on, on of our agenda. That was the whole purpose tonight. Didn't want to blindside you folks. I wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to possibly amend something. Surely not going to ask Brian, or you, Richard, or anybody else to do it on the fly tonight. You have a couple of meetings between now and then, maybe you can discuss it, whether or not you could come up with an amendment that could allow the board of selectmen to support this, and, and at least at this town meeting, the, the way that it would be amended.
I had already told Ralph that I was going to come up-
Do we have a, is there a list of people chomping at the bit to start putting up turbines as soon as that the moratorium is over?
We don't have one.
Sorry?
We don't have one.
Yeah, well, and I guess that's one of the thoughts that I had, was that everybody's concerned about the moratorium expiring and having, you know, nothing in place, you know, this not passing, but it seems to me that there's been enough controversy and enough concerns raised so far about the, the two town turbines and even the, the web turbine, that I don't know that anybody wants to step into Falmouth right now and start throwing turbines up, because it's going to create a lot of angst along, amongst a lot of people. I, I wouldn't be so concerned about the moratorium expiring. The other thing, too, is, Rich, it's, you're right, it's about trust, but it's not about our trust in town meeting, it's about the public's trust in us. And when we start making laws, it's just essentially what the bylaw is that exempts the municipality, whether it's in good intention or not, it's not going to go over well with the general public, and there will probably be enough people to sink this ship if we try to float it, so.
Pat, shoot. Yeah, Jim?
I'm very much in favor of finding a way for the selectmen to get, to be able to relocate the wind turbines. We don't want to close that door, that was never our intention. But I really don't want to see, we've, we've fought a long time on the municipal use, and, and I can't, that would, to me, that would totally waste the last six months of our work if we changed that. We can find a way, an exemption for these turbines that solves your problem, I'm very much in favor of an amendment. I really think we need to take it to town meeting now, to have the public discourse and to get through it, and listen to everybody, and have that be a big part of it. And I think to wait another six months is really not a good idea. I, I agree, we don't really have anybody waiting in a line, but who knows, maybe somebody will come up with some kind of funds that starts paying for it, and we, we're facing something we're not aware of. I would just as soon deal with it now, bring it up for public discourse, lay it out the way we plan, and, and come up with an amendment that solves the selectmen's problem. And that's, I don't know what that is, but I'd like to see it.
Yes. Yeah, Doug?
I think it'd be great if there's, can be amendment that the selectmen can jump behind the planning board on this article. We voted against the recommendation of a different bylaw out of deference to the amount of work that you guys have done on this bylaw. If there's a way we can support it, I think we'd love to, whether it's this town meeting because there's an article, or I think it's going to be very important that the board of selectmen, if it doesn't pass this town meeting, gets behind the planning board for the spring town meeting. The only question I had is, is there a chance in the future of amending the bylaw, dealing with the amount of power that's produced, in the event that turbines become much more efficient and actually are real, produce, and that's only my concern, is the restriction on the amount of power that's produced is based on current technology, as opposed to maybe things work out better, and all of a sudden we find a very quiet one that's very small, but can produce a great deal of power.
Right, Doug, I've already proposed that we allow wind turbines that are transparent, and that they don't make any noise.
I guess I didn't, I didn't see that.
And, and, and that they don't have any health effects.
Okay, and answer to your question, the way the bylaw has written, and we've taken pains to do this, it can be easily amended. Okay, Brian, right now we have 250 kilowatts in, and we have, we have not been extremely specific as to the sound, because as you pointed out, the technology is changing, and particularly worldwide, since there is so much concern as they've become more prevalent, I'm assuming that the technology is going to get better, and we will be asked to amend it. But it's written so that it can be easily amended.
Thank you, Rich.
Okay, Brian, any final comments? I thought your suggestion was very good.
Temporary, specific, general categorical exception.
That goes along with the transparent.
Transparent, got it.
No, I think winter, right, yeah. Okay, that, that would be a perfect world. Any final comments from any of the members of either board? Okay, I think, yes, Rich?
Just as, as I told you, Ralph, if the planning board goes forward recommending this, and I told you this two weeks ago, it's no surprise, I'm going to introduce on the floor-
I'm not, I'm not saying you didn't tell us two weeks ago.
An amendment that exempts the town, and I'm going to explain why.
Okay, that'll be good. Okay, if that's, if that's the final, I thought that was a good discussion, and hopefully we can come up with something that where we can get the support of the selectmen. I don't think that we'd have a chance at all if the, the selectmen didn't back this, this article. The next item on the agenda is a land use vision map, process of creating a map and revising the DRI thresholds. The planning board has discussed this a fair amount already, and Brian is going to speak to it again here tonight. And if that's the case, if it's going to be PowerPoint and, Bob, Bob, would you handle the lights again?
Yep.
Okay, that's good.
Enough?
No, shocking, that's-
Okay. Do you have enough light, Brian?
Not mine.
Okay.
I'm going to give you the abbreviated version, because I can see the eyes starting to droop. Put my own.
Let's just age.
Yeah, that's the best, that's good. All right, the board members should have a handout that looks something like this. It's called the Regional Land Use Vision Map Overview Benefits and Process, together with some definitions. So let me just show you, this is the, this is the Cape Cod's Regional Policy Plan Vision Map of all Cape Cod's. Here we are, very dominant, here's our town of Mashpee, town of Born. This hatch is the NMR area, Borendale, here's our friends in Barnstable, and Yarmouth, Dennis, Brewster, Harwich, Chatham, Lees, Wealthy, East Tan, Truro, and Prost. Where the Truro, Prost. You can see that the regional land use map, or vision map, has five components to it. And there, and there are economic centers, villages, industrial service trade areas, and resource protection areas. And you can see, like, the town of Yarmouth, or Barstool here, has these economic centers usually around Route 28 and Hyannis. They have some village centers, you see one here in Sandwich, I guess this is probably where Mr., I forget his name now, has his development coming in. This is the Quasars Bay, growth incentive zone, industrial research area. Our friends in the town of Sandwich, up here on our border, have some very large economic development center. I'm going to talk to the commission about that a little later on, this is exactly what's on their minds over there. But the way it works is fairly simple. There's two processes, there's one, the creation of the map, and then there's a process where the town can actually apply to the Cape Cod Commission to reduce DRI thresholds, development regional impact thresholds. The way you develop the map is the planning board holds a forum, whatever that is, this is probably a discussion. The planning board then forwards that off to the planning committee, the Cape Cod Commission, who holds a public hearing. Public hearing input is then forwarded off to the full commission, and then the full commission votes in ordinance to the Assembly of Delegates, and we could have a, a land use vision map that might look something like this. Let's see if I can get this to work. Yeah, I put, I put audiovisual stuff on the Capitol plan, I didn't make it this town meeting, but I'm hopeful that in some time in the future, we'll do that. So the planning board may remember this, this is what we discussed back around 2008, and we were looking at, I'm sorry- and we were looking at, I'm sorry, this is a little bit bigger, we were looking at industrial trade centers for the Tech Park, we were looking at Edgerton Drive, we were looking at village centers up at Nathan Ellis Highway, and County Road, and Route 51, the Chappaquoy area, downtown on Palmer Avenue, and we're looking in Coit, we're village centers, we're looking at resort or economic centers in the Davisville area, because we're looking at that large intersection project, and you can hardly see it, we're looking also at an economic center in Woods Hole, and an economic center on Terry King Drive in the vicinity of the hospital in those areas. So that's where we left the discussion off, because at that time it was considered to be a planning exercise. Since that time, the Cape Cod Commission and the Assembly of Delegates have actually incorporated these vision maps into their regulatory scheme, just about 2009. Now that it's part of their regulatory scheme, if we had a certain map along these lines, and it's actually been voted at the Cape Cod Commission, we can actually apply to the Cape Cod Commission, and the board should have a copy of this, and Chapter H, just change your attention to that, it's six or seven mini game pages of things you have to do to amend thresholds. The thresholds are part of this chart right here, on page two. And you can see that in an economic center and industrial service and trade areas, you can actually increase those thresholds, up to 30,000 square feet for commercial use in economic centers, residential units can go to 30, and you can actually have a mixed use, up to 60,000 square feet in economic centers, up to 40,000 square feet in these industrial service and trade areas. The other areas, village centers, and resource protection areas, and those others, you actually, your thresholds must go down. We have, and to change the thresholds, it's a different process, it's actually a joint effort, whereas the planning board brings the map to the commission and the assembly, to change the thresholds, you can vote through Section 4, it's actually a vote of the Board of Selectmen and planning. So you both must vote to forward this application off to the Cape Cod Commission to change those thresholds. We have, and in some discussions, and you can see there's these economic centers and industrial service and trade areas, and they're defined for you, they don't quite fit what we want to do in the hospital area. We're also looking at including the Quisson campus, the Louie's Quisson campus, as you know, we had the Sosis building, they have to go through their review process, we also have their ring road and infrastructure that had to go through their process some years ago, and we'd like to be able to incorporate that area also as an economic center somewhere, thinking. The way they have this fashion at the moment, we would like to be able to work with the commission to be able to bring in something that's different than this. Some of the villages might work for us, the industrial service and trade areas, even if we had had Edgerton Drive on a map, and if you actually had applied to the commission to change the thresholds, that was a 44,000 square foot level of effort, all they're going to give us is up to 40. So we need to be able to work with them to amend thresholds, somehow work with us. And if you want to have larger buildings, if the hospital wants to come in, if we're going to be having in touch with allied health services in the area, we're probably looking at more than a 30,000 square foot level of effort. And it doesn't quite fit, I think, medical services and the definitions. The other issue we'd like to talk to the commission about is, we also have to map your natural resource areas, and one of the issues that we have, that we need to discuss with them, is that if you want to have village centers and economic centers around East Main Street in the Harbor area, it has to be outside natural resource areas, and what other resource areas are there, especially flood zones or slosh areas. We need to be able to talk to them about Woods Hole and the Harbor District in order to really make sense for us to bring this map in, they couldn't approve it today, because we can't defend these natural resource areas that are subject to these categories for hurricanes at these slosh areas. So I've had those discussions with their planning staff, I've had this discussion here with the planning board. The map is a relatively easy error exercise to do, the changing of the thresholds, I asked the boards to read that application process, it's a much more lengthy process, it's not guaranteed, and it may not be exactly as good fit with us. But we are moving forward, we're always going to have further those discussions with Paul and Christie and their staff over there. How can we make this work for the park community, for its needs, so it's a little bit different than, say, Barnstable, so it's a different choice, in the direction we want it to be. And so that's my abbreviated version here for 10 minutes, or 5 minutes, as where we stand in this vision process, for the board.
Okay, thank you, Brian. How about your questions by anybody on either board?
Well, I just have a comment. I think because we have the unique characteristic of being surrounded on almost three sides by one, and no other town does. So those are resources, all of our shorelines are actual resources, so it is different for us, so we have to kind of find a way to, and I think it's great that if you talk with them, they're standing there, too, and find a way to make it work for us, that we get our growth incentive zones, and we get all of that, and the economic benefits, but we have to understand that we also have surrounded by one.
Other comments, or?
Just an observation, correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounds like the thresholds that the commission has enacted really don't go far enough for us, that they're not big enough, that there's too many restrictions, that it sounds good on paper, but when it comes to actually practically applying this, it's not going to work for the town.
And other towns have found the same thing. I mean, there's only one town that's applied to change the thresholds, and that's Dennis. So I think they've come to that realization, talking with the staff there, that, you know, for us, if the hospital's going to come in, it's, we need to be realistic. If you want to have the buildings we want to see in Tech Park, they're bigger than 40,000 square feet. So let's talk about, this is a great idea, but let's see if we can be, we can amend thresholds that fit Hyannis and fit Falmouth, far different than what might fit Truro.
Other comments or questions?
And that's, and I have, I'm sorry, Ralph, and they're receptive?
And what?
They're listening.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, yeah. We, in discussing this previously, just for general information, this, if we would go ahead with this, it would require a considerable amount of staff time. As you know, one of our staff members is out on maternity leave right now, and if we do, would go through for this, we'd have to maybe not do some other things that we are, we are, we might want to do. So this also, if Brian has enough time to even consult with them at this point, I'm glad, but it could be difficult. Yes, Doug?
I would just like to express appreciation on my behalf, and I think on the rest of the board, of considering this, I think that this is something we sent to you, saying we are very interested. I think this answered my questions completely, and appreciate the time that you've given to the issue, and I think we can certainly move forward at this point.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this, on this, on this item number three?
So I'll advance the discussions, and then we, if we're going to be meeting again, perhaps we can revisit it a little more time.
Right. Okay. All right, thank you, Brian. Okay, the final item on the agenda is a discussion of the two elements that, for the local comprehensive plan, now I can call on Pat, without being embarrassing myself, it's a discussion of the water, sewer, and energy elements of the local comprehensive plan, and a status update. I believe there's a handout for all of us, I think the planning board has seen it before, but there are handouts for the Board of Selectmen. Pat?
Okay. So we're calling Dr. Stifler, please. Okay, so that's, you probably know, the local comprehensive plan is a Selectmen's committee, and you appointed the planning board as that committee, so that anything that comes up at town meeting has to have your recommendation on it. It would be by you, and you recommend it. Now, having said that, I want to, and also, when Brent was chairman, he appointed for one of the elements, a subcommittee with two Selectmen, two planning board members, and two EDIC members. So that's, that's the structure currently. We have finalized the energy element, which we started a number of years ago, and got a lot of input from the Energy Committee, and we have finalized the water and sewer element. We chose to put water and sewer together instead of keeping them as separate elements, because they are inextricably linked. So- That's why our committee's called the Water Quality Division. Exactly. And so we put those two together. As I have explained before, and you probably will remember this, but perhaps not, and we have some new members, the comprehensive plan that we currently have is unevenly written. Some elements are very small, some are quite lengthy, going on for 20 or 30 pages, it's a difficult, and it's differently formatted from element to element, so that, one person told me he uses it as a bookend. Now, we don't want that to continue. So our goal is to make this new plan extremely usable, it's also our goal to allow it to go for 25, 50 years, and that's an entirely different structure from what we have. We want to have one or two goals maximum for each element. The goals are something that is sort of like a warm and fuzzy statement for the benefit of the town, and that goal should be able to live almost forever, or those goals. So you will see under the energy element, a goal, you will see under water and sewer element, two goals. It necessitates two goals in that case. We also want to have the policy statements live for quite a long time. If you were outlining something, you have a goal, and then you have coming off of it, policy statements. We want to limit the number of policy statements, too, to maybe five, six, seven at the most. And those two are more generic in nature, they should be able to go forward and not have to be changed. One of the major reasons for structuring it in this way is that the goal or goals and the policy statements have to go before town meeting for approval. Anytime you change one of those things, either a goal or a policy statement, you have to go before town meeting for their approval for the change. So that is a major reason that we want to structure these, so that they live for a long time. Then you will notice also action items. This will not, this isn't the structure when it goes, when it gets printed in its final format, it will be easier to look at. But if you look at the action items, let's just look at energy, we have a number of those, we can shorten them, the list, in the original output here, because the idea is that we have an action item, we have whether it's a short term or a long term action item, and we also have the responsible party for that, so that they're clearly assigned, you don't have to go looking for it, it's right there. We anticipate reviewing this on a yearly basis, those things that have been accomplished, we want to get rid of. We don't need town meeting to get rid of an action item, and we want to supplant it with something else, if necessary, that has come up, and that's obvious that needs to be tackled. So that is the structure on here. On the water and sewer elements, we met with Ray and Jerry, principally now, who gave us their input on what they saw as necessary, priorities and action items and policies, and we listened very carefully to them. Once we put it together, we brought it back to them for their input. So we've had a lot of vetting on this, but now it's your turn to read it and to give us input on it. Do you see anything in there that you want to change? But please remember, because if you look at our current comprehensive plan, some of the goals are actually policies or maybe action items, that, and that's what we're trying to get away from.
Good. Yeah.
And I appreciate all the work you've done on this, and unfortunately, there was a scheduled meeting with Heather, and I guess there were one of the meetings that you folks weren't able to make, and there was some feedback that I gave, but I think it's a good working document as we move forward, and I wanted to make sure that it get out to the Board of Selectmen, because we'd ultimately be the ones that have to adopt it. Maybe get our red lines or things that we have some concerns on, back to Heather, and maybe she could sit with your group to work on those issues.
Absolutely.
So the update is timely and important, because we want to move forward.
Well, the sooner the better, for your comments on these, because right now I'm saying they're in our final form. But that's the only time when it makes sense to bring it before you, for your comment, instead, you're not part of the whole working thing. And we are currently working on the economic sustainability portion of it, we're currently putting together the goals and the policies on that. Now, that's a, is that the-
Rich? Rich?
Yeah, I mean, I just, you know, I always look for anomalies, that's just my nature. So I'm looking here at two of these goals, develop a replacement plan for the municipal fleet-
Those are action items.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry, action items, I didn't mean goals, yeah, I missed that. And explore opportunities to license town-owned real estate for energy generation infrastructure. Now, now, if we're talking about curbing accessory, as an accessory use, the use of wind turbines, limiting that to an accessory use, we're talking about letting the town, use the town for energy generation infrastructure, which would not be an accessory use, which would be a primary use, I see an anomaly there. Now, okay, you could say, well, yeah, we're going to have a huge solar field, but I guarantee you, there are going to be some neighbors that are pissed off, excuse me, that are going to be upset about that. And what I think, I think this is an admirable energy element, and I think the way to get that is to not be too restrictive on the town's use of wind generation. Now, I'm not suggesting that we should exempt them-
Rich, how many-
Excuse me, excuse me, I'm not suggesting that we should exempt them from the specific setback and sound performance requirements of our bylaw, but I do suggest, again, that we should exempt them from the accessory use restriction, and I also suggest that for commercial use, that we adopt a different accessory use standard from the amount of power generated, and instead-
Point of origin, we're not discussing the wrong bylaw here.
No, no, I am talking about these, these energy elements in terms of what we are proposing as a bylaw, and I think that is most relevant, point of origin. Now, now, excuse me, just let me finish. It makes much more sense, if we want to talk about an accessory use, much more sense in terms of good public policy, to meet these goals of getting away from fossil fuels, to define the accessory use in terms of money generated instead of power generated, so that a business who has a, invest money in a wind turbine, let's say, doesn't have to worry about keeping down the amount of wattage he generates, and therefore how much he can sell back to the, to the utility, you just say that the amount of money he generates can't exceed the amount of money that he generates in his primary business. That allows him to make much better use of his wind turbine, and allows him to make much more efficient use of energy generally. And it's not, it's going to be an artificial standard anyway, but might as well make it on one that comports better with our goal statement for energy use. Thank you.
You can do red line comments, too.
Right.
Yeah.
I just want to reiterate what Mr. Murphy said earlier, that I would like more time, obviously, to look at this and submit changes, but there is one thing that jumps out at me, and I don't want to- But there is one thing that jumps out at me, and I don't want to begin a discussion about it this evening, but I just want to put the thought into everyone's head. The second goal here for the water and sewer element, where it says Falmouth shall protect by sewer-ing. That's, that's going to create a lot of issues with a lot of people, and I even have some issues with the way this is written. So I'll offer some ideas and suggestions, but just a thought that that could be an issue.
And that was my point, and I appreciate them bringing this forward, and it's something that we want to disseminate to the Board. Heather originally wanted to narrow it down a little bit with this group, and hasn't had that opportunity. So maybe we could do that process, let Heather narrow it down. I mean, we're still referring to an energy coordinator, and it's no longer in our budget. So there are a few things that we need to, and I think the professional staff, meaning Heather would be better to narrow it down, and then disseminate it back to us, if that's all right.
I just want to make one comment. I think this is great. I mean, this is really good. And I think, I kind of agree with, well, having been to the wastewater conference just recently, worldwide, yeah, we need to kind of modify that. But I just think that something to think about is, in each of the action items, see where you have responsible parties. Sometimes there's more than one. I might suggest that one of them be designated the lead party. So there's always one, that everyone in the group knows, that's the go-to person to keep things going. And it would be different maybe in each one. So that somebody always is the lead, and you know who to contact, and not everyone's not waiting for someone to take some ownership to it, but it's just a suggestion.
Excellent.
We tried, we did that this time with our strategic plan. We made it very specific, the responsible parties.
Jordan.
Yeah, like you.
That's what's going to happen. Stand up.
But you're right, because then it's just like, okay, so who's going to call the A, who's going to do? But this is, this is why it needs your eyes, because we've gotten a whole lot of other input, but we need executive input on this, too.
Other comments or questions about the item number four, and either the water, sewer, or the energy elements for the local comprehensive plan draft? I think that each, each individual Board can take a look at this and then get back to us, and let the committee move forward.
I did forget to mention that we do hope to bring this, plus the economic sustainability element, to spring town meeting.
I wanted to mention, too, I think I'm now the member on that.
You are, yes.
But I haven't had any notification, so I don't know exactly when.
You're supposed to.
I am?
We meet on Wednesdays.
Oh, what time?
Three o'clock.
Three o'clock, in the small conference room.
Every week?
Every other week.
Well, now, we're focusing on the economic sustainability. So yes, it is going to be every week until further notice, as far as I know.
Depending on which Wednesday, every other Wednesday, I have a commitment from like nine in the morning until six at night.
This Wednesday?
No, this Wednesday, I don't.
Aces. You'll be there then.
And where is it? The small conference room. This is the Wednesday.
This one's only from 10 to 6.
It should be finished by Friday. I have another commitment at 7:00 o'clock for my night.
That's okay. We don't last for than an hour and a half, so.
Final comments from anybody about tonight's meeting in the agenda?
No.
If not, just turn the meeting.
Okay.